Good evening and welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, April 19th, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Here.
Sorry, Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any, excuse me, I'll first start with the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting of April 5th?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes and brings us to agenda revisions. Do we have any tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So moving over to public forum, speakers will have one opportunity of up to five minutes to speak on topics to remain to city business. So does anyone from the gallery wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, Mr. Sharp, come forward, please. Just name an address for the record, please, sir.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Birch Street, Cedar Falls. So again, I'm here tonight to ask that, I asked a few months ago to overtime, employees overtime and the bills and payroll, or bills and claims section of the council agenda. The public and the council should have easy access, convenient access to these numbers. We shouldn't have to be calling City Hall or whatever trying to get these numbers. Nobody cares about the office supply costs or magazine subscription costs that are there, but people are concerned about employee wages and overtime documents should be available to the public. The previous mayor recently came out in the Courier and talked about the PSO program and said that it had already saved $200,000 in overtime. So when I was looking at the numbers from January of last year, February 2020 to January 2021, the department had already spent $276,000 in overtime. So using the previous mayor's comments, he's insinuating that $478,000 was the cost of a traditional police and fire department. I'm not buying it. And that's why we need those numbers available to the public. When I looked at those overtime numbers, we had a PSO that earned $36,000 in overtime. That was 13% of the total budget. That's more than what a lot of people make in a year. The top nine employees in the Public Safety Department, another overtime earnings was 57% of that total. Top four earned 33% of that total. The numbers could have been a lot higher. A lot of those employees took comp time as well, for the hours, and the four of those, their hours exceeded the maximum allowed by the police contract. So the dollar amounts could have been a lot higher had they chosen not to take comp time. That's what I'm saying, we need to have that in there. I was disappointed that there has been no, from what I went through, and my other fellow firefighters went through two years ago, last year, there's been no accusations of sick leave abuse or schemes that the firefighters were accused of by the previous mayor and certain council members. There was no finger pointing at any of the PSOs about abusing this, or where do they live. I'm just disappointed in the double standard, the lack of consistency about this going on. So that's why we need to have the overtime back in the council packets. It's nothing secret out there. We're not asking for withholdings or anything else. We just want to see what they got, what they're earning, and we can keep an eye on because these costs do cost us money. And if there's a way to control things, that's numbers we can look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other speakers from the gallery? Okay, seeing none, then from Zoom?
Number ending 0467.
Okay, thank you. So 0467, if you can give your name and address for the record, please. The floor is yours for five minutes. We're not hearing anything just yet. So if you can try that again without your mute on. Okay, so still nothing. Do we have someone else for public comment? We can come back to that person.
There's no one else on Zoom.
Okay. So we've got the line unmuted, but we can't hear you on our end. I apologize for that. Okay, so having to move on, see no other speakers from Zoom or from the gallery. I'll consider the public forum closed, and that'll bring us over to special presentations. I have a few tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing the week of April 18th to 24th, 2021, as Admin Professional Week, and April 21st, 2021, as Admin Professionals Day. And I'll read that as, "Whereas administrative professionals coordinate the office operations of business, government, educational institutions, and other organizations; and whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, software, technology, project management, organization, customer service, and office management; and whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the critical work of administrative staff; and whereas the City of Cedar Falls recognizes and appreciates the vital work carried out by our own administrative support team; and whereas these administrative professionals have a variety of titles, yet each has an irreplaceable role to play in the daily work of the City of Cedar Falls. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 18th to 2024th as Administrative Professionals Week, and April 21st as Administrative Professionals Day in Cedar Falls. And I do hereby encourage all businesses and organizations to celebrate and recognize their excellent administrative professionals who ensure organizational success every day. Signed this 14th day of April, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." So want to especially thank our administrative staff here, particularly as we saw from the work session, the hard work that goes in from our admin staff, Jackie Danielson and Kim Care and their teams, in order to keep the city running. So thank you very much, and I'll give them a round of applause. So our next item was a continuation from last session. We had some technical difficulties. And if we have a representative from the Solid Waste Commission who would like to speak about the solid waste, or the hazardous material cleanup day on the 24th, we can certainly entertain that now. So if you are that person, feel free to raise your hand in Zoom, or if you're in the gallery, you can come forward. And I'm not seeing that. We did hear about it during our last meeting, which was a committee of the whole. So that information is available at wastetrack.org. They still do need some volunteers for that event. So if you can participate, please get ahold of them. It's a very worthwhile cause. So moving on to Volunteer Week, we have tonight Lauren Fink with us from the Volunteer Center of the Cedar Valley, and I'd like to present a proclamation for her. Sure. There we are. So Lauren, if you'd like to come to the podium, you'll have a few moments to give your speech. And I'll start us off to say Volunteer Week is the week of April 18th to 24th, 2021. Whereas National Volunteer Week was established by presidential proclamation in 1974 to show the nation's appreciation to the millions of volunteers who improve their communities and country through efforts both large and small each and every year. And whereas National Volunteer Week provides a special opportunity to encourage men, women, and children of all ages to get connected to their communities by engaging in short and long-term volunteer service opportunities. And whereas volunteering is vital to the long-term health and prosperity of society by carrying out activities that are necessary but unfunded. And whereas our community is so very fortunate for the leadership of the Volunteer Center for the Cedar Valley to match interested volunteers with worthy service projects and organizations in the Cedar Valley, now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 18th to 24th, 2021, as National Volunteer Week throughout the city. And I urge all citizens to celebrate the service of our many community volunteers, and further, to learn about volunteer opportunities through the Volunteer Center for the Cedar Valley and other civic service organizations. Signed this 14th day of April, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." So Ms. Fink, thank you so much for joining us as the Executive Director for the Volunteer Center for the Cedar Valley, and love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you so much. Again, yes, Lauren Fink with the Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley. Thank you for having me, and thank you, Mayor Green, for the opportunity to celebrate what a wonderful week this is. The Volunteer Center's been a part of this community for going on 26 years, and we're so proud that we have thousands of individuals who connect with volunteer opportunities every year from over 200 community organizations, nonprofits, and events that happen here in the Cedar Valley. So we just appreciate every single one of you doing your service to our community, and appreciate everybody who's out there who's volunteering, as well as the organizations who are taking time to recognize volunteers as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And this is for you. Thank you very much. And thanks for everybody here who volunteers in the community as well. There's so many different kinds of causes and activities, both local, state, and national as well. So our country would not be the same without that work. Next is a proclamation for Arbor Day, and we have Mr. Jim Newcomb with us from the North Cedar Neighborhood Association as president. They've been instrumental in a lot of our tree work here in the city, and I'm excited to have him with us for Arbor Day proclamation, which will be April 30th, 2021. So whereas, in 19, excuse me, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and other countless wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day throughout the city. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this 13th day of April, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." So Mr. Newcomb, thank you for joining us tonight, and I would give this to you virtually if I could. But do you have a few words for us this evening?
Thank you. Well, I was kind of surprised when you mentioned my name, Mayor, but I'm very glad to accept this award or this recognition. The City of Cedar Falls has really stood behind us in planting trees, and of course, we're struggling with the removal of all the ash trees in the landscape, but the city's jumped all over it. And we are continuing to plant trees wherever we can to enhance our community. And thank you very much, and we have more trees to plant.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, especially with the ash borer taking down quite a few of our trees this year requiring removal. We're definitely in planting mode for sure. So thank you very much. Our last proclamation tonight is for Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month and Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day. And do we have TJ Warren with us tonight? Mr. Warren, come on forward, please, to the podium. Thank you for bringing this to our attention last year. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is committed to educating the public about this genetic disorder which afflicts 2 million people globally, including one in every 3,000 births, yet is still relatively unknown by the public. And whereas NF affects all populations regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. And whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, and can also affect the development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones and skin, and can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research aimed at finding effective treatments, and ultimately a cure for NF, and is actively fostering collaborative relationships in both science and industry to speed the drug research and development process through a number of consortia called syndose. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation improves access to quality patient healthcare and its support through its national NF clinic network, its information resources, youth programs, and local chapter activities. And whereas, much work remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF, and to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month, and May 17th, 2021, as World Fibromatosis Awareness Day in Cedar Falls. Signed this 13th day of April, 2021. So Mr. Warren, do you have a few words for us tonight about this?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Green, Council, for having me here tonight to talk about this very important issue that's a part of our lives, but also 2 million people globally. My son, in February of 2019, was diagnosed with this neurofibromatosis. And essentially what came up with it, my son had this bow in his leg. So we went to the doctor's office, and the doctor said, well, it could be two things, an abnormality, or it could be this neurofibromatosis. And that word was scary. So we went to Iowa City. Doctors confirmed he had two of the seven symptoms of neurofibromatosis. And so we started learning, when you Google this, it's ugly. But when you actually take a moment and connect with the Children's Tumor Foundation, an organization dedicated to supporting individuals and their families to fight this thing, it's pretty magnificent for that community. So we want to end NF. That's the mission of Children's Tumor Foundation. And we actually have a lot coming up here in September. Normally, it's been hosted in Iowa City and in Des Moines, but it's going to be here in Cedar Falls this year. And so at Gateway Park, September 18th. And so, yeah, we want to thank you all for just helping us spread awareness on this notion, and hope that you get involved. We are planning to have it in person. Last year, it was virtual. We'll see what happens. But yeah, we're hopeful that we can be in person and celebrating and supporting each other. So thank you for your time and attention. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Our best wishes to your son as well. With that, moving over to Special Order of Business, item number seven is a hearing on a proposed resolution adopting and levying the final schedule of assessments for the 2020 Sidewalk Assessment Project, Zone 3. Tonight, we have initially staff comments from Mr. Tolman. So Mr. Tolman, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight's public hearing is for the final schedule of assessments for our 2020 Sidewalk Assessment Program. You know, a little bit of a brief overview, the city has 10 sidewalk zones. This was Zone 3. Sidewalks are marked for deficiencies. Homeowners are given a notice and a specific time to make those repairs. After that period has lapsed, the city will hire a contractor to make the repairs. And after the city's contractor is complete, we'll send a bill for the work to be completed. And homeowners have 30 days to make that, or make the payment. Otherwise, the outstanding debt will be filed with the county to be placed on their taxes. And that breakdown is included in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any respondents who wish to comment tonight on their assessment? I'm seeing none. Do we have any on Zoom? Okay, thank you. So with that... Part C is a resolution adopting and levying the final assessment of, or scheduled assessments for the 2020 Sidewalk Assessment Project, Zone 3. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. Any council discussion on this item?
So all the, I have a question. All the ones that were not paid are the ones in yellow. Is that right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Then it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that final assessment has approved, and that leads us over to old business. Item 8 is Passing Ordinance 2988, amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to the mayor and administrator duties on its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Over, any comments from the public, from the gallery, or from Zoom?
We have one on Zoom, 0467.
Okay, so 0467, the floor is yours, sir.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Scan, we can hear you fine now.
Yes. I'm very interested in this particular item, Ordinance 2988, because at the last council meeting, on first reading, it was approved, but it was not approved in the proper fashion. For example, the wording of the ordinance was not displayed so that people would know what it is. The only display was in the packet. And then, as I looked through what was happening on the last meeting, there was absolutely no real debate on the merits of the motion. This particular item does deal with that memo discussion that was had earlier in the year. And so when it came up as a ordinance, the way in which the ordinance was framed was to diminish the role of the mayor and to enhance the role of the city administrator. This is not a good ordinance. It should not pass. And the discussion about the role of the mayor and the role of the city administrator should be restarted. And a decision that is more favorable to the people then brought forward. See, we have, as you know, a mayor, council, form of government recognized by the state. And in that particular situation, the role of the mayor has been diminished for, since 2014, with the beginning of the city administering, of the city administrator with Ordinance 2824. So in order to get back to what we should be, mayor, council, then something has to happen to the power of the city administrator. It bothers the mind that, as I read early amendments that was then put into the ordinance language, how much the changes enhanced the city administrator and diminished the mayor. So this reading should be defeated, and the process of making Cedar Falls truly a mayor-council situation should continue. I really am so disgusted that the city has not been given the opportunity that it should have. Maybe with the change, which was a very good change to the timeline, maybe something can be done.
One minute remaining, Mr. Scan.
Yeah, something can be done to rectify the situation. We are a mayor-council, but in terms of operation, we're still not a democracy. And I think the democracy of the city council is restored. And I appreciate the comment for being able to be stated. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Scan. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment? Even the gallery? I'll note just that with the movement of this item, it was discussed in detail during work session and then in committee of the whole. The items that were a concern for council members were addressed for that final ordinance. So if you saw that there wasn't a lot of very lengthy discussion during the council meeting, during first reading, it was because all of that discussion had occurred during work session and committee of the whole, and particularly committee of the whole being broadcast and recorded. Certainly, you can see that debate as that occurred at the time. And I would encourage citizens to do so. So if no other comments from the public, then back to council. If any additional comments or discussion before voting on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dunn?
So I have heard from many folks about being very clear that they do not want any power taken away from the elected office of mayor. I'm very conscientious of that. To me, when I read the first section under the Section 2187, and it says, "The mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city and shall have the power to oversee all functions and operations of the city. The mayor shall retain and exercise all authority over the conduct of the city government." I mean, that says it, to me, that says it right there. We're not taking the power away from the mayor. We're not taking the power away from the mayor. And then, if you go into the city administrator straight apart, it also says that ultimately the council has the power to fire the city administrator without cause by a majority vote. I think I'm understanding that right, correct? Okay. So, I understand citizens' concerns, and I've been...I mean, this is something I feel like probably, you know, many of us have been thinking about during this entire time. And in no way do I want to take any power away from the elected office of mayor. But I don't see that this is doing that. I see it as it's simply cleaning up an ordinance and making it more clear as to how our city actually functions and works. And it's...to me, it's not about the people who are currently sitting in these roles. It's about the future, and I don't see it taking away power from the elected office of mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Dara?
I would agree. I think historically, the mayor has always been here to ensure that the city's operating the way that the council wants the city to operate. I think there's been some sense that perhaps the rewrite of this was an attempt to take either authority away from the administrator or the mayor. And to me, it's just clarifying the practice that's been there all the time. And that is, the mayor ensures that the administrator is administering the city departments that do the work of the council. And ultimately, the council still is making the ultimate decision. If the mayor steps out of line, the council can still correct if need be. But the mayor supervises the administrator to ensure that the goals of the council are being addressed. And I think all that has happened is clarified it. And we've had that practice for a long time. It's just now more clear.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, so this item's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Taking us over to new business. Under the consent calendar, the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does anyone from council wish to pull an item nine through 15?
I'll pull nine.
Nine, okay. And anyone from the public wish to pull an item? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
That was number 12.
Item 12, correct. And then, Mr. Fine?
11.
Okay, item 11. Okay, any on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay. So, I will read items...oh, gosh, my scribble here. Items 10, 13, 14, and 15, and then come back to the others. So, item 10 is receiving and filing the resignation of Betty Danielson as a member of the Community Center and Senior Services Board effective June 30, 2021. Item 13 is receiving and filing the biannual report of the community main street relative to 2021 self-supported municipal improvement district funds and FY '21 economic development grant. Item 14 is approving applications for beer, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor permits. And then, item 15 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items minus nine, 11, and 12?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes then. And brings us back to item nine, which is approving following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. Councilmember Harding, you asked to bring that out?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to all the people that had applied for the Human Rights Commission. We had a...I was part of the selection committee, and we had a lot of applicants and a lot of really good applicants and a lot of really great interviews. And that commission is doing some really good things right now. And really, they work hard. And it shows. The chair and the vice chair were on the committee with me, and I was just really impressed at how, not only how passionate they are, but how diligent they are working. So, I just wanted to say thanks to them.
Thank you.
And thanks to Bob Seymour as well for going and putting out there that he wants to be on the Met Board.
Perfect. And also to Tony Babcock, thanks for her organization of all the applications and everything else, arranging those meetings.
Definitely.
With that, any other discussion from the gallery on this item?
We need a motion to approve?
Oh, I guess we do, yes. So, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. Then I should have done discussion. So, if nothing else from gallery or from council, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes and takes us to item 11, which is receiving and filing the mayor's report relative to the appointment of members to the Cedar Falls Racial Equity Task Force. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded and open for discussion from council or questions from council first? Okay, and then from Mr. Fine? Just name and address for the record, please, sir.
TJ Fine, 1319 Austin Way. I do appreciate kind of getting ahead of informing the task force. I just had a few questions on it. I wondered if it was more of like a Cedar Valley coalition type deal, or namely, if there were any requirements that members of this task force either live and/or work in Cedar Falls? And then, to see if it was going to function in cohesion with the Human Rights Commission, or if they were going to be a completely separate entity. Thanks.
Okay. I can probably answer a few of those. I might turn over to Frank for a couple of questions, since he's the chair of the task force. But for the first part, there was a preference for people to live in Cedar Falls or work in Cedar Falls, but that wasn't a requirement according to the task force's charge. I left that to the nominating discretion of the task force executive committee to make that decision, and that was Frank Dara, Kelly Dunn, Willie Barney, and Melissa Heston. And I thank them for their excellent recommendations and for some very careful thought, being only to fill a handful of positions, being able to get the, hopefully, the most beneficial, the most productive discussions possible out of that and deliberation. So, Frank, would you want to comment at all about some of the considerations that went into those decisions?
Well, to answer one of the questions, two of the members of the commission, the task force, are on the Human Rights Commission. But we made it very clear from the onset that the work of this group is going to be totally separate, or at least separate from the activities and the votes that they're taking currently on the Human Rights Commission. Certainly, there'll be some overlap in discussions and that kind of thing. But having two members with their expertise on the task force makes a lot of sense. I will say that we've had a core group discussing where's this headed. It's a pretty weighty discussion for this community, and we're not taking it lightly. We really want to ask the tough questions without getting in people's face about it. I think there's a sense that some changes need to occur in Cedar Falls, but they don't have to be drastic necessarily. But they need to be well-vetted and well-discussed, well-considered. I really think our first two or three meetings at least are going to be, where do we go from here? How do we make this really a viable step forward for our community? So, I'm anxious...well, our first meeting is next week from this Thursday, and it'll be the first time we'll be together. And of course, we won't be together because it's on Zoom, which I totally hate. I mean, really, a discussion like this needs to be in a room like this, where people can look at each other. So, it may evolve, if we can, to more of an open discussion like this. But our first meeting, our first couple of meetings will be where we've got a variety of people on the commission with different perspectives. And gathering all those perspectives into coherent plan is not going to be easy. So, I want this group to try to find some common ground to start with. I think, my guess is, we're going to have a report in October that's going to say we've only begun, and we've got a lot of work to do down the road. But we've had some really good discussions with the help of the Human Rights Commission members already, and I think we'll just have some exciting things to do. I guess I would probably suggest that after our first couple of meetings, the whole group will come back and give a status report. But it will be a work in progress. I'll also admit, I've already gotten several emails saying, "What are you doing this for?" You know? It's not going to necessarily be well-received in the community, but it's one of those things that I think a community that's looking forward has to face up to and have an open discussion. And hopefully, that's what we'll do. Probably more information than you wanted, but matter of fact, that our meetings will be half me talking and half everybody else getting a chance. Not really. Hopefully, that won't be. Thanks for the questions.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Harding?
I don't have any.
Okay. So, with that, that item has been motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that passes and is received and filed. Next was a receiving and filing, the committee of the whole minutes for April 5, 2021, relative to the College Hill Vision Plan. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Opposed? Okay, so that...looking at...
We're just approving the motion to talk about it, correct?
Where was I?
Motion to approve. I motioned it. Someone...did anyone second it? Second.
I think Mr. Sharp had some questions.
So, motion and seconded. I'll bring it up. Mr. Sharp, your floor is yours.
So, Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. I understand we're just receiving and filing it. My question is, what's going to happen next with the plan? When do you address the hot topics like the parking issues? Does new construction, new building, whatever continues on while we're deciding what to do with it? Or do we put stuff on a hold to kind of wait and see where we're doing the parking requirements? Or...because I think that's probably the most controversial issue right now that you can't reach consensus on, and it's something that needs to be probably addressed citywide. So, I'm just seeing, after receiving and filing it, do you have a timeline of what's going to happen next?
So, Mr. Sharp, with that, I have to be really careful with what the requirements of Robert's rules are, part of the procedure. So, it's just to...if you had questions about what was in the report itself, if it was inaccurate or you wanted to change, then that would be part to discuss that. But certainly, something we could look at for talking about toward the end. So, that item's been motioned and seconded. Anybody else from the gallery want to speak about that item? Okay, and Councilmember DeBir?
I believe Simon said to receive and approve, but I think you meant to say receive and file, because that's what it says on the agenda.
Okay, receive and file.
I don't know if you wanted to correct that to receive and file, like it says on the agenda.
So, it's been motioned to receive and file, the committee of the whole minutes of April 5, 2021.
Correct. I believe I heard him say receive and approve.
I don't recall that.
Maybe I did.
But your point is well-taken.
We are receiving and filing.
We are receiving and filing item 12.
That's what I meant if I didn't say it, sorry.
That's all right.
So, with that, any other discussion on receiving and filing item 12? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes to receive and file and takes us over to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does anyone wish to pull an item from council on 16 through 30?
Number 18, please.
Number 18, okay. Any other items from council?
16 and 19.
29, Mr. Mayor. So, 16, 19, and then 29.
And 18.
And what was the last one?
18, I'll...
18, okay. Yep, 18 was Councilwoman Miller. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an addition item? Yes, Mr. Sharp? 30, okay.
And we have one from Zoom here.
Okay. So...
Jim Skane?
Yeah. Mr. Skane, which item would you like to pull in addition to the ones already stated?
21.
Okay, 21.
23. 25.
Okay, so I have 21, 23, and 25.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. We will do that. And any others? Seeing none, then I'll read the remaining minus 30...excuse me, 16, 18, 21, 23, 25, and 29 and 30.
Don't forget 19.
And 19, I got to circle that guy. Okay, thank you. So, item 17 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a landlord East Apple certificate for a lease agreement for property at 800 Viking Road, has a solar garden. 20 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a contract with quality striping relative to 2021 pavement marking services. Item 22 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a stormwater maintenance and repair agreement for River Place Properties at 302 Main Street. 24 is a resolution approving a central business district overlay site plan for wheat pasting murals in the downtown business district. 26 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement for the CEBG V2 funding relative to the CARES Act for East Side Ministerial Alliance. Item 27 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement for a federally funded block project with Jesse Cosby Neighborhood Center for a CEBG V2, CV2, funding relative to the CARES Act. 28 is a resolution approving a revised S1 Shopping Center District Site Plan for 6301 University Avenue. And that is all. So, is there a motion to approve those items minus 16, 18, 19, 21, 23, 25, 29, and 30?
So moved.
The motion is seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 16 was a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a service product agreement with E.D. Bailey LLP for audit services. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Open it for council discussion. Councilmember Cyrus, you had a question?
Mr. Mayor, it just seems to me to have the people being audited pick out who their auditor is. My wife worked for the Treasury Department and was an auditor for them, and she said it just seems like kind of a red flag. This, I believe, should have been picked...this auditor should have been picked by council members, and we never did get...it's supposed to have bids. We never did get to see what they charged. And I would always like to have a different auditor go through our books from time to time to see if there was anything different that we could pick up. So, that was just my issue with it. I'd like to see council a little more involved, especially with something like an audit of this size. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harding?
Is there a reason why we didn't get to see the bids and stuff on this one? Because we generally do.
Yeah, we can sure provide you the actual documents, but just to let everyone know. So, one of the things that we did when we sent out the request for proposal is, we do have several criteria we base the selection on, not just price. Things like, can they meet our deadline for getting our report done? What's their experience with other government, Iowa government cities our size? And so, you know, we took all those criteria into account. Just to let everyone know, there was four bids received. E.D. Bailey was actually the second to the lowest. However, the lowest bid did not have any...does not do an audit of any other governmental or Iowa city our size, and they would not commit to our deadline. So, we...but again, E.D. Bailey was the second lowest. One of the things, too, that...we do have a couple of things that are a little unique about our audit. One is, as most of you know, we apply to GFOA for our Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, so we also want to make sure our auditors have experience in that. The other thing is, is we do have to report Cedar Falls Utilities as a discreetly presented component unit. Since they are a component unit of the city, that's kind of unusual. So, again, we want to make sure there's auditors who have that experience well as well. And actually, E.D. Bailey does the audit of CFU as well, so that kind of helps with that presentation.
Okay, and that could be a recommendation or discussion topic for goal setting? If you would like to...council would like to discuss changing that process. They certainly could do that then. could do that then, and staff would have that direction for next year.
Sure. And Mayor, I should have also pointed out that, you know, all auditing firms, no matter who they are, do have professional and ethical standards they have to go by. So, if anyone thinks that the auditors come and it's a, it's a easy stamp of approval, probably haven't been part of the audit process. There's probably other department directors besides finance staff who can vouch for the questions that the auditors come and ask. So, I did just want to point that out, that every firm has to abide by those ethical standards.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember DeBoer?
I've met with the auditors several times throughout the years, and I'd like us to continue that, where we have at least two council members meet with them. I know Frank's done it many times, too, as Mayor of Potomac, and now that we just have one person, I think it's important that at least two of us get involved in that.
No, Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Cyrus.
Did any council people meet with these people?
I have in the past.
Not that I'm... Yeah, not for this election process.
Okay, thank you.
I think what Council DeBoer was referring to is when the auditors are here, they actually interview council members, and they've even actually interviewed the mayor in the past.
I was interviewed as well, yes.
That's what Council DeBoer was referring to. And we'll actually, obviously, continue. We'll make sure, I mean, I'm sure the auditors were going to do that, but we can sure make sure that they do that as part of their process. When they're here for field work, we'll make sure they talk to some council members.
Okay. Thank you. So, if no other, do we have a comment or question?
We do have a public comment. Jim Skane?
Yes, Mr. Skane. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes. I have a friend who has, on his own, looked at the audits for the city and for the school board, and he has noted a number of irregularities in both over the years.
Now, Mr. Skane, I'm going to stop you there. That would be an accusation of malfeasance, sir? And...
No, I'm just...
No, I'm not going to allow that kind of a comment, sir. If you have evidence, I would very much encourage you to bring that to me, sir, as the ombudsman, but I won't allow you to impugn a company without some sort of evidence to that effect. And public meeting just without evidence is not going to be that. So, do you have anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Skane, for that?
I'm not impugning the company. I'm just saying that someone who went over the audits found some errors.
Yes, sir. And so, that is, that is impugning. When you're talking about an audit firm, if you're saying that they are bringing forward errors and not correcting them, that is impugning their operation, sir.
Well, I mean, if you're going to say that, then that is what you're saying. But it seems to me that the audit should not just be done by the hired auditor, but there should be an opportunity to look at it again. And that's basically what I'm saying. And I'm not, and to say that there may have been a mistake is not impugning anything. I mean, a baseball player may make an error on a ball hit to the infield, but that doesn't mean that you're impugning the baseball player. But I think, you know, I think I've made my point, and I hope that there is council oversight of the audit that is evidently going to be underway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skane. Any other speakers for public comment?
No more.
None? Okay. So, with that, no comments additional from the gallery. So, it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Takes us over to item 18, which is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement relative to property vacated by the 2008 flood buyout programs. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded, and we have, for Councilmember Miller, you had brought this forward?
Yeah, I was just, I see Mr. Newcomb still on Zoom there, and I wondered if he wanted a chance to speak on this one. I assume that's why he's paying a little more attention here, so.
Certainly. So, Mr. Newcomb, we have this project before, so you wish to speak on, sir?
Sure. Does the council have the report that we put together? I think Stephanie got that to all the council members.
Yes. Yes, sir.
The proposal? You all got the proposal?
Yes, sir, we did, yeah.
Good. This was brought to us last fall, and brought to our North Cedar Neighborhood Association Board of Directors, and we took it under advisement and voted on it and unanimously approved it. I serve as the president of the North Cedar Neighborhood Association, as well as the chairman of the Natural Resource Project. But the person that came up with it was Abby Rippey, who happens to be my daughter, who's very involved with things in North Cedar and projects that we've done in the past. And it sounded like something that we could certainly get our kids involved with. It's not a community garden. It's really a learning and teaching garden. And we have submitted our documentation to the city for the leasing of these four lots along Longview, and I think it's a project that can really do some great things educationally for our students at North Cedar, as well as anybody else that wants to get involved with learning how to grow products and plants. And we hope to have it be a true learning opportunity for kids and parents involved with this project as it goes along. And we're excited about it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. Does council have any questions for Mr. Newcomb?
I don't have a question, but I think it's fortuitous that we were honoring National Volunteer Week, and we've got one of the best volunteers in the Cedar Valley here tonight doing this work. So, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Ray. I appreciate that. Well, we've got a lot of great volunteers in our community, and we've got some really great ones out here in North Cedar, and we appreciate the city working with us on projects that we've been doing. And we're not stopping. We're going to keep going. And I invite anybody that wants to come out and take a look at the National Resource Project. The city's helped us put a lot of trees along Longtree Road a few years ago. It's a, it's a great community. It's a great, great neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, certainly have made North Cedar a treasure for the city, and look forward to seeing this beautiful garden come out. So, of course, let the city know how we can help. With that, if no other comments or questions, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, that does, lease agreement does pass. That brings us to item 19, which is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for an automated refuse collection unit. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. Open it up for discussion. Was that from the council or from the public?
That was from me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, from Councilmember Cyrus. Go ahead, sir.
I just have one question. I like to buy local. I just wondered, did we solicit Curb Master? I know they're right here in our industrial park on this. Curb Master, we did? And they didn't turn in a bid? Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, that, any other council questions or comments? Then it's been motioned and seconded, and for item 19, motion seconded, requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, those expenditures of funds are approved. That takes us to item 21, which is a resolution approving the certificate of completion and accepting the work of Kate Cunningham Construction Company for the Downtown Streetscape and Reconstruction Project Phase 1. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. For any council questions or comments? And Mr. Frye, I believe you had a question or comment for this item?
It's Mr. Skane.
Mr. Skane.
Oh, Jim Skane, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Skane.
Yeah, I have a number of pieces of information I need. First is where this particular Phase 1 occurred. In other words, what part of the downtown area was involved. Second is what was the cost that was estimated and how much was approved. And I think those particular questions are the ones that I had on this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skane. So, the question being, what part of downtown was improved for Phase 1, and then what were the costs that were estimated and expended? So, can staff provide an answer to that? Do you have that available here? Yes?
Yeah, I can address some of those questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So, the work that was included on Phase 1 would have been the Main Street Parkade of the 100 block, both sides of the street, the 200 block as well of Main Street Parkade, and then the reconstruction of West 3rd Street with the sidewalks as well, and East 2nd Street was reconstructed. As far as costs go, all the costs are outlined in your memo there. I won't go through all of them, but has a breakdown of design and then all the funding sources that was contributed to the project.
So, available on the memo? And any other questions or comments from council on this item? So, it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to 23, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for 2021 survey services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. And Mr. Skane, you had another question or comment for this item, sir?
Yes. For Snyder, and Snyder has been involved with a number of projects, their survey services are for what specific area? And it seems to me that it is really a conflict of interest for Snyder to have a number of projects that are underway, like the roundabouts on Green Hill, and then to be hired again for survey services. So, I need to know what those services are, and whether after the survey, whether they will be approved to construct whatever is involved.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Skane. For, it would be a Director Sheets question about the survey services, who...
I can take that one, Mr. Mayor. So, some of the work that's outlined in the contract there are projects that Snyder is involved with the design for, and those are listed in the memo there. Cyberlane Extension, Cedar Heights Drive, Oak Park Sanitary Sewer, and the Industrial Park, and the West Viking Road Reconstruction. Again, I should preface it all by, approximately a month ago, we were notified of a resignation of our city surveyor. So, as of the end of the week, we are currently without a licensed land surveyor to do some of this work. So, we have to get a consultant on board to continue on with these projects to make sure they are completed on schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Director Shangi. Any other questions or comments from council or from public? Okay, seeing none, then this has been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to 25, is a resolution approving and accepting a lien notice, a special promissory note for property located at 721 West 17th Street relative to this rental and single-family owner conversion incentive program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The motion is seconded, and Mr. Skane had a question or comment for this item as well. So, Mr. Skane, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes. The cost of this program, it's the city paying people to move in as a single house. And in this particular case, there is a cost, I guess it's around $10,000 that they're given as part of this. And this is not the first one that has been converted. Can someone give me how much the city has paid to convert houses from rental to single-family owners?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skane. So, would staff have that information handy, or can he, should you just call in?
No, we don't know, I don't know offhand the number that's been awarded each year, but this program's been in place since 2016. We budget every year, as we reflect in the CIP, $100,000. In some years, we've had just a couple of projects, and in other years, it's been closer to, kind of 10 projects would equal the $100,000.
Okay, thank you. So, if you'd like to know that specific number, Mr. Skane, staff would be able to provide that during regular working hours for you. So, that item's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item 29, which is a resolution approving a College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District Site Plan for remodel of a duplex at 704 to 706 West 28th Street. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. It looks like Councilmember Cruz had some questions about that.
Yes. I have a concern, as I was studying this over and reading the city ordinances, there appears to be a significant contradiction to what the code says. And it's been brought up before, but when a property, and I'm reading out of 11-334, if a property has a lot width at the building line of 70 feet, which both sides of this property does, a lot area of 8,000 square feet, and a street width of not less than 31 feet, no more than four persons age 18 and older may rent or occupy the dwelling. In the staff recommendation at the end, they're putting a stipulation that the occupancy limit has to be fixed at three persons age 18 and older. And what I see is the staff recommending things that go contrary to what the city ordinance is saying. I know they say they don't want four bedrooms, but they'll let the builder put three bedrooms, but they can't limit the persons for the property. It would be the same thing as if we had a one-bedroom studio, and the city says you can't have two people in it. I mean, we're, we can't pick and choose how people choose to live. The code clearly says you can have four people if these other criteria are met, and they clearly do. So, with that, I want to make an amendment to the staff recommendation to allow four persons in this to match the code.
Okay. So, a motion to amend to allow four persons in this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded for discussion. Open up discussion for this amendment.
Couple of questions. If we're amending it to four, but we were voting on six, or are you amending it to four per side, so a total of eight?
Four per side.
Does that need to be clarified, or are we okay on that?
So, with the, the way that the document, or the proposal is worded, is it four per, or excuse me, three per? That'd just be a strike through of that item?
The way the staff report is written is three per unit, so it's a total of six for this structure.
Okay. So, we'd be looking at an amendment of four per unit for a total of eight per structure.
Okay. And then, as far as the ordinance is concerned, I know we talked about this a little last time, it's only because of the overlay that we were bringing it to council, correct?
That's correct, which is a separate section... That's correct, which is a separate section of the ordinance. It is not the Section 11-334 that Councilmember Cruz brought up. So, this is in the College Hill overlay where this review is applicable to come through council. Otherwise, the Section 11 is reviewed by the group rental committee for review and approval.
Okay, other discussion for this amendment? Four per unit, eight per structure?
Or, Ellis?
Yes, Councilmember Dever?
Can Stephanie go ahead and explain why the staff recommendation was as it is?
Sure, as the staff report outlines, some of the criteria that were looked at is kind of the original structure. So, when we, we look at what was it kind of originally built for? What does it have a capacity to serve? That also includes looking at parking, not just the interior of the structure. We look at what the character of the neighborhood is, and the staff report talks about how there are units around there and what their occupancy are. So, that was something that we talked about when we had the request previously for the four and why staff recommended against that request. And so, the applicant went back and changed it with this proposal for three per unit. And after taking a look at the structure, the parking, the neighborhood, staff is recommending approval of three per unit.
Okay, other discussion on this amendment? Councilmember Cruz?
If I could respond then to that, those components. The character of the neighborhood is it's a immediately adjacent area to the campus. Our visioning people have said we want density next to the campus. You couldn't get any closer. There's like four houses, I believe, or five between this house and the campus. The campus has been there for 145 years. Students have always been there. So, nobody predates the idea that this area would be dense with students. It shouldn't be a surprise. We have eight legal parking spots. So, the character of the neighborhood is student rental. And I believe it's an injustice to not allow the students to congregate next to campus. The exterior, the structure's not changing. They're actually going to upgrade it, new windows, new siding, do a lot of cosmetic things. It'd be great for the neighborhood. And as far as student living, there's the nuisance ordinances that we all abide by, noise, litter, all that sort of thing. And there's the landlord accommodability ordinance so that if there's any problems with enforcing rules and regulations, landlords and tenants alike can be held accountable for. So, I don't think you should be deprived of the option of having four persons on each side. I don't think we should tell people how many renters live in a bedroom. We don't do that anywhere in the city limits. That's all kinds of a slippery slope there. So, it's a great injustice not to allow four persons on each side of this, particularly with the off-street parking that's approved. And the builders agreeing to put in vegetation and beautify and do all the things that one would expect. And he's a good tracker of doing so.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on four to eight?
I find it odd that we have discussion, like lengthy discussion about parking on one subject when it comes to College Hill, but then when it comes to a different subject, we're all of a sudden okay with more parking or more, you know, higher density. I'm not against, I get College Hill. I lived there for seven years. I get it, it's there for the students. We also have a drastically lower student population than we did in 20, 25 years ago. I just, I find it odd that we, one thing, it's a big problem with parking, and then another thing, we're okay with it. And it's, it's, we all know that it's not just the four people that live there. I mean, I live in a neighborhood that has rentals. I mean, and I'm not against rentals, but there's people coming over to visit. I mean, it does change the character. There's more people parking on the street, which isn't a bad thing. But when it's, you know, I just find it odd that we debate and debate about parking. And then when we go to a different, like, pretty much the same area of town, we're all of a sudden okay with increasing that density. That's odd to me. So, I mean, I prefer the staff recommendation and the P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Other comments, questions?
If I could respond a little bit to that as well?
Okay.
The street parking around the campus, for years, people have been asking for resident-only parking. And I think it's the next step that needs to be looked at. If you go there on a Saturday or Sunday, the streets are bare. And everybody's entitled to have visitors, whether it's a Christmas party or graduation, a baptism, whatever you might have. The street is 31 feet wide, and that's a dimension that allows parking on both sides. This particular area is odd and even, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday alternating. So, as a continuation of the discussion with the visioning people, the logical step is resident-only parking. We have off-street parking provided for the people that live there. And our current code says four people can live there. So, we, we're going down a slippery slope if we're going to contradict our own code with a vote by council. You have to choose to change the code if you want to have less people in this property. So, by following the code, he's allowed to have four people on each side.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Did I hear wrong when staff just said it was the overlay that changed that?
You are correct in that.
It just gives us the choice.
Can you clarify that, please? For giving us a choice?
Yeah, the overlay doesn't have a different specification. It just means that it comes to us to make the choice, correct? In other words, the overlay does not say that you can only have two or three. It's not, it just states that the council, it comes to council to make the decision of whether it's allowed or not.
Yes, it has a review because of the overlay. In all other circumstances, Chapter 11 that was mentioned, when it comes to occupancy determination for a new rental or a change in ownership that goes through the group rental committee, it does not come in front of council. And then the factors that were mentioned about the lot width, about parking, and other capacity-related criteria that the ordinance outlines is what the group rental committee considers in determining occupancy for a unit.
And would this be precedent-setting for future projects coming forward? Anything similar?
Well, anything in the overlay with the College Hill overlay ordinance in place is going to come before Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for this review, unless the code is changed, our zoning code is what I'm mentioning at this point, which is a potential in light of if, if the College Hill Vision Plan is adopted, then the next step is to consider any code changes that we want as a, as a part of that. But for now, we need to review it under our current College Hill overlay code.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Particularly for, if we've not heard from someone yet? Okay, then Councilmember Cruz.
The overlay, as far as I'm aware, and I'm pretty familiar with it for over 30 years, doesn't prevent a four-bedroom property from being rented. And I don't see, you talk about the character of the neighborhood and various things like that. We've had lengthy discussions with the Rental Conversion Task Force and nuisance ordinances and so on. The parking lot is there. It's approved unanimously. The code says you can have four people based on criteria. The overlay doesn't preclude anybody from having four people on a side of a property. And this is a traditionally-built duplex. It wasn't a conversion, which is a distinction as well. Traditionally-built duplexes will not go under review to lose a bedroom at the point of transfer. Conversions may. So, the overriding thing in my mind is the fact that it's literally steps away from campus. You can be on the campus in a classroom in about a minute and a half from this property. And the students' interests, I think, would be well-served as the rest of the community, so you don't have students spreading out all over town. Let them live close to campus, and that's why they're in town here.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Again, this is for the amendment only, to change from three per unit for a total of six per structure, changing that to four per unit for a total of eight per structure. So, with no other discussion, then all in favor of this amendment only, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so, can I see a show of hands for aye? One, two, three. And nay? One, two, three, four. So, that does fail. So, it brings us back to three per unit for a total of six per structure. Is there any additional discussion on that item without the amendment then? I'm seeing none from council?
I move we support the...
Well, we've already got the move from the first time around. So, now we're just back to that discussion. So, if seen no other discussion on it, then it's been motioned and seconded to approve the College Hill zoning overlay district site plan for that remodel of the duplex at 704-706 West Twenty-Eighth Street. And this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Taking us over to item 30, which is a resolution setting May 3, 2021, as the date of a public hearing on proposed amendments to the city's FY 21 budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. And Mr. Sharp, you had a question or comment for this item, sir? Come right up.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. I'm just going to ask a couple of questions in advance of the hearing so to give staff time to prepare a response for when I talk about it.
Well, and Mr. Sharp, again, it's an issue of the resolution date. So, this, this isn't a discussion of the item itself, but of whether or not the May 3 is an appropriate date for that.
All right, I mean, I was just trying to give staff, because I'm going to ask questions on May 3, and I thought it'd be polite to give them a heads up instead of asking any questions and then not having an answer, so.
Certainly. Yeah, if you'd like to send those to me, I would be glad to get those forward. Thank you very much. So, with that, it's been motioned and seconded for that hearing date of May 3, 2021, for the proposed amendments. No other council discussion, this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Takes us over to bills and claims. Is there a motion to allow bills and claims of April 19?
Some moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded. And any council discussion? Any from the public or on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay, seeing none. So, motion is seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight? Seeing none. Do we have any council updates?
I have an update.
Yes, Councilmember Dever, please.
I had requested some safety improvements along the trail at Dry Run Creek Basin, Detention Basin. And I noted the other day that they had been done. And I simply wanted to thank Director Sheets and Director Shragi. And Ron, you probably had something to do with it, too. But I see they were done, and I was very happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dever. Any other updates from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires?
I like to buy local whenever we can. I want to thank Mr. Heath for all his hard work he does, and including every, every local business that he can try and use. I'd like to see us maybe look into leasing John Deere equipment for our entire town. It would do a couple of things that would save us money. And also, we would promote John Deere, which is a big part of our community. We have a lot of people who live here who work at John Deere. And if we could look into something where we would lease brand-new equipment, and they would take care of the maintenance, as long as the cost would save us money, I'd like to look into something like that. I don't know if Mr. Heath, since he's here, if he'd like to comment on that. That would be something really nice that we could do. It would, when we have people come in here from the entire world to come to the PEC or any other part of John Deere, since John Deere is a huge worldwide company, I'd like to have Cedar Falls promote John Deere. And I would like to have them always see John Deere equipment at our different places, whether it be the golf course or work or anywhere else. That's something I'd be glad to look into as a councilman, if we could, and, and talk with Brian about some of these things. And that's just kind of my issue I'm bringing up. I would like to have us buy more John Deere equipment, as long as it does save us money. And maybe to lease instead of purchase might be the way to go.
I would allow for, for Mr. Heath, if there's any procurement notes he'd want to share?
Yeah, we've, we've been down the lease road a few times for looking at different options for lease in the past. Unfortunately, you know, we, we haven't really come around to establishing leases. In very few circumstances have we done that. We had a few pieces of golf course equipment that we've leased. But looking at a broad range of leasing our particular equipment, we haven't done. We've always kind of had the mindset that if, that if we've got the money to purchase or if we've put it in our CIP or in our vehicle replacement program, then that's probably the way to go. And then look at the most fiscal way to handle that through the little bit process. Not to say that we can't look at that, have staff discussion on that, but that's kind of how, how we've been working that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Brian, when, when you look at lease terms, they're usually, I don't know, three, four, five years or something like that. Don't you typically get more life out of a piece of equipment through our rigorous maintenance and that to tip it in favor of owning, I'm assuming? Or...
Well, yeah, with our, to Mr. Sires' point, you, you could defer some of the costs in terms of maintenance with a lease agreement. However, having the ownership of that equipment, you're, you're apt to better take care of it instead of just some service cycles that it goes through. Our experience has been with, with our staff and our mechanic staff that do a tremendous job. We've had a good life cycle out of, out of all of our equipment that we purchased.
So, it makes sense to own as opposed to lease?
Not to say that, that it couldn't be discussed.
Sure, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates for council? I would just like to make a plug. I was able to do a ride-along on Saturday night with Police Lieutenant John Guirzma, our Public Safety Lieutenant. And I certainly want to encourage council members to do ride-alongs. I've been fully vaccinated now, so as you have your vaccinations, please consider doing ride-alongs for some extra interest and knowledge about city operations. And congratulations to Lieutenant Guirzma on his promotion. That was just Saturday. Looking further to staff updates, do we have any staff updates tonight? Mr. Gaines?
Mayor, the only update that I'd have is just to please save the date for mayor council members. There will be a public safety ceremony that we're doing to honor all the promotions and things throughout the year for the public safety staff. That'll be May 11 at, is that 10:30, Jeff? Is that what I'm remembering? Yes, so, May 11 at 10:30.
Excellent, thank you very much. So, with that, next item we have, excuse me, I have one more. We wanted to ask from, from Mr. Sharp's question earlier about what would happen going forward with the College Hill Vision Plan? Can we give just a 30-second note for the timeline on that? What's, what we're looking for next?
Sure, we will have at the next council meeting the request for council to consider adopting the College Hill Vision Plan. So, once the vision plan is adopted, then we can start looking at a schedule for implementation. One of the primary components was that the contract that we have with the consultant was also not only for the vision plan, but also for zoning. And so, we would be looking to move forward with, with that. With the downtown experience, I guess we had COVID in there that delayed that a little bit, but it was about a 12-month process before we had the code in front of you. It might be just a little bit faster with College Hill because there will be elements from the downtown code that will apply in this case. And we'll be more familiar with it and might be able to move it slightly faster. But it's probably going to be somewhere around six to nine months before a zoning code would be moving forward through the public process.
Okay, thank you, Director Sheets. So, with that, if no other staff updates, then is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Some moved. Second.
So, motion and seconded. And I should note, this is an executive session to discuss collective bargaining per Iowa Code 20... per Iowa Code 2017 and property acquisition per Iowa Code 21.5 to discuss purchase or sale of particular real estate only where mature, premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price. The government body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the government body would receive for the property. So that's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we are shifting to executive session, adjourning the meeting, but we will shift into the mayor's, or the, you know, mayor's conference room for that discussion tonight. So I want to thank everyone for joining. We will just be back in for a moment to adjourn. So thank you very much for attending tonight.